Good evening. Number ninety-two, the Red Bull. Victory in Jesus will stand sweetly, please. Number ninety-two, the Red Bull.
I heard an old, old story. How the Savior came from glory. How he gave his life on Calvary. To save the rest like me. I heard about his throney. How his strength was a tony. In our remission of my sins and won the victory. Oh Victory in Jesus, my Savior forever. He saw me and loved me with his redeeming love. He loved me and knew him. And all my love is due him. He must seek to victory beneath the cleansing blood. I heard about his healing. How his strength is far redeeming. How he made the lame to walk again. And calls the blind to see. And if I'm right near Jesus. Come and give my broken spirit. And somehow Jesus gave him rock to be the victory. Oh Victory in Jesus, my Savior forever. He saw me and loved me with his redeeming love. He loved me and knew him. And all my love is due him. He must seek to victory beneath the cleansing blood. I heard about a mansion. He has built for me in glory. And I heard about the strength to go beyond the crystal sea. I got the angels singing. And the open lips and story. And some sweet day I'll sing out there the song of victory. Oh Victory in Jesus, my Savior forever. He saw me and loved me with his redeeming love. He loved me and knew him. And all my love is due him. He must seek to victory beneath the cleansing blood.
We will remain standing clear. I want for Jerry Crocker, he will help us up the prayer.
I would like to thank for up here in Dallas, come to have that Lord, you think he called me in place for you. He was always with us, making Lord it. You can send us to, what we did so, Lord, you get the, the done before you're on your floor, Lord. Let there, Lord, they think that's his name.
Amen. Good evening. We had a good afternoon. I may just remind you about a few things very briefly. Uh, tonight following the service when it's over, our meeting, we'll, our youth will be leaving with a youth. We're going to a different retreat and we'll be spending the next three nights out there. And then we'll be working and doing different projects. And so, and you'd be praying for that trip. And based on weather, we'll cooperate. Just like with the rain, if it's through, we'll have some nice temperatures. So, uh, also Brother Curtis McQuishion will be leading the adult Bible study meetings tonight. As I'll be with the youth this week, but we will be back in town for church meetings tonight. So I'll, I'll get to sit in here and listen to him. And so, uh, looking forward to that. Now, also next Sunday evening at five o'clock, the budget committee will be meeting. And so be mindful of those things, okay? So here are just a few moments. The print you've got in your hand, we'll be discussing that along with other issues that are associated with that. And so we'll turn it back over to Brother Walter this time.
With two ninety-five, we sang this song quite a bit and, uh, sometimes we just mumble the words. Sing with some, just a feeling, some spirit. Still, what a friend we have in Jesus, if he's your friend. Singing from the Lord's Lord by him.
What a friend we have in Jesus. All our sins and grace to bear. What a friend the list to carry. Everything to God in prayer. Oh, our peace we often forget. Oh, our goodness pain we bear. Oh, because we do not carry. Everything to God in prayer. And we trials and temptations. Is there trouble anywhere? We should never be disturbed. Take it to the Lord in prayer. And we find the prince so faithful. Who will all our sorrows share? Jesus loves our every weakness. Take it to the Lord in prayer. Oh, we wink and heavy laden. Oh, hurt with a load of pain. Precious Savior still our man is. Take it to the Lord in prayer. Do thy praise his eyes for saving thee. Take it to the Lord in prayer. In his arms he'll take and shield me. Thou will find a soul to save.
What a friend we have in Jesus. We thank you, dear God, for saving our souls. Inviting us to dwell with you eternally in your, in your kingdom, your heavenly kingdom. Because you love us. Uh, we praise you and thank you for the times, dear Lord, that when we simply didn't seem to know what to do. You were always there. You were our friend, you guided us. You directed us, dear God. And we pray that we'd always look for your deliverance, your leadership, and you guided us. Your word says, "If you will act wisdom, we should ask of you, and you give generously without finding fault." While in this meeting tonight, we pray that you can give us a little bit about how to proceed. We've to expand our church facility, dear God. We pray, dear God, it be no mistake. We're just not doing it all because we want to, dear God, because it will bring you honor and glory. And we have a larger place for people to come to worship. Father, we just praise you and thank you and love you. Ask to accept our gifts to you, which you've already given unto us. We return to you, of course, and that which you've given us. We've asked you to glorify you as your kingdom. May it always bring honor and glory to you. I pray it all in your name. Amen. Choir's gonna sing. I'll meet you in the morning. And if you feel like singing, go ahead and sing. If I could hear a louder group coming from this way, I'd just turn around and leave you.
I'll meet you in the morning by the bright river sun. When our sorrows and strife get away. I'll be standing at the portal when the gates open wide. At the close of life's laundry ready. I'll meet you in the morning. With the howling you call me. And we'll sit down by the river. And the capture all the pain that's been with you. You'll know me in the morning. By the stars that I wear. When I meet you in the morning. In the city that is still a cross where. I'll meet you in the morning in the swing by and by. And exchange the young cross for a crown. There will be no disappointments and nobody shall die. In the land where the sun go and shine. I'll meet you in the morning. With the howling you call me. And we'll sit down by the river. And the capture all the pain that's been with you. You'll know me in the morning. By the stars that I wear. When I meet you in the morning. In the city that is still a cross where. I'll meet you in the morning at the end of the way. On the streets of that city of gold. Where we all can be together and be happy for a. While the years and the ages shall roll. I'll meet you in the morning. With the howling you call me. And we'll sit down by the river. And the capture all the pain that's been with you. You'll know me in the morning. By the stars that I wear. When I meet you in the morning. In the city that is still a cross where.
This is the new Baptist meeting equalizer. I'm just kidding. This is gonna be my redneck corner here in a few minutes. You didn't do it? You's the guilty dog, boy. You said, "Like my kids, they trying to meet one, meet the other," for the night. Well, we, we come tonight and we're gonna take the time here to have this meeting. We've gotta take the time to have this meeting. It's, um, just kinda give you a timeline here on kinda where we are and how we've reached to the point where we are tonight. Uh, on maybe twenty-first, I received an email from Jim Hines, who's the president of Hines, or excuse me, Zion Church Builders. And, uh, he notified me that he had, for the sake of saving time, he asked his wife to go ahead and pay the state of Tennessee a fee. They charge us a fee to even review our building blueprints. And so he notified me of that and asked us to reimburse him, and that amount was for sixteen hundred eighty dollars and eighty-four cents. That's what they charge just to look over them. And so we, uh, we got that took care of. Then on June the fifth, I was asked and received an email from Zion Builders asking if we had city water near us. And, uh, they were, they felt confident that we didn't have that close, because they knew we were all well and secure. And, uh, the state was asking about that. Then on June the twentieth, I was sent a, another email with a fire hydrant waiver attached to that. And that was, uh, to ask the local fire chief to sign off on the fact that we do not have a fire hydrant within four hundred feet of our building. And so I took that to City Hall and passed that along on June the twenty-fourth. And then, uh, on, uh, July the eighth, uh, Fire Chief Brian Tucker and the city has a code enforcement officer that they contract named Ricky Watkins. They came to the church here and they stepped off or didn't step off. They measured where Chief Tucker said the first truck would park. In the case of a fire, they call it staging. And the closest fire hydrant is down the road down here at GSC Sand Company. So from here, uh, where they think the truck would park in the fire and been in a fire to the fire hydrant is thirteen hundred feet. The length of their hose and all, from what I understand, that's as far as they can run a hose is twelve hundred feet. So we were with out, we were outside the limit, legal limit of what the state would allow. Therefore, we were looking at, uh, we were gonna have to have a fire hydrant. There was no way around it. So Fire Chief told me, uh, Tucker said, "I cannot sign this waiver." And so then that was on, uh, on Monday, July the eighth. And so then on Thursday night, July the eleventh, Brother Walter Winchester and I went to the city council meeting here in McKenzie. And on behalf of the church, Brother Walter explained our situation. And he asked the city council to consider installing a fire hydrant for us. And, uh, of course, Chief Tucker was there. He spoke to that. He said, "Yes, but it's a need." Uh, the waterworks, Mr. Ben Woods was there. He said that, uh, he thought that the, the city water department could absorb that cost. Just for the pipe and the fire hydrant was over six thousand dollars. That would be, uh, doesn't account for the cost of having someone install it, uh, from, uh, down there to within the legal limit here, uh, for, uh, for us. The city attorney, I think you could say she advised them, it'd be a wise thing to do. Uh, we are sitting in the city limits of McKenzie and right now, we're not protected the way we should be. Uh, because we don't have a fire hydrant. Uh, Chief Tucker said that if we were to have a fire, right now, they'd have to treat us like a cannon fire. They'd have to have tanker trucks trying to bring enough water out here to put a fire out of the building. And so, uh, but the question was raised, and so we need to be mindful. The question was raised, so do we plan to get on city water, sir? And, uh, but the lawyer didn't wanna make the statement. She said, "That's another discussion." So, uh, we've been told we do not have to do that right now. But after that comment, I wouldn't be surprised if that issue doesn't get brought up again, okay? So I'm just advising you, uh, we, we, uh, Brother Walter explained about having to have, have to have, we'd be on dead end land. The watering guys don't know about this. We'd be on dead end land here. Uh, the water have to be, uh, whatever you call it, flushed regularly. And so after that, they would, the issue was dropped. But the city voted, the city council, seven members were present. All seven members voted unanimously to furnish us with a fire hydrant. So the city of McKenzie is gonna furnish us, uh, putting in a fire hydrant for us to use. On July the sixteenth, uh, I talked with Zion's architect. And I learned that the state, they've been going back and forth with the state. They, the fire hydrant was the first hurdle we had to get past. Uh, they've been going back and forth with the state of Tennessee. Uh, the fire marshal's office, they objected to our building plan, and that's where we are tonight. That's why we're here having this meeting, uh, that we're gonna have here tonight. So basically, what we're facing now is the state of Tennessee, uh, see, we might put one, uh, put the, uh, the A-one printer on the screen, please. In your hand, you've got a front and back copy, and the bottom left hand down there in the ledger should say eight-one. And according to our original print, our architect, when he designed that and drew that. He, the chairs on the floor and the chairs in the choir, there'll be a total two hundred and ninety-three seats. And so, uh, I don't know if you can, you probably can't make it out of your print there. But the total, the total seating there between the choir and the floor was two ninety-three. The state of Tennessee rejects that. The state of Tennessee does not go by chairs. Uh, they go by eighteen inch width seat. And we, this church voted to do the bigger chairs, the twenty-one, twenty-two, wherever they are. State of Tennessee doesn't go by the seat count. The state of Tennessee uses a square footage calculation. In other words, they, they don't, uh, they don't accept our, our drawing there because the state of Tennessee goes by a formula. They're figuring seven square foot per chair. And then on the platform, the choir area, they are figuring fifteen square foot per chair. Now here's where it gets weird, okay? Now, I got the email here from the architect after I had my follow-up phone call. The state of Tennessee says that we're, our chair size is too wide. And that our aisle, our aisle widths are too wide. And that, uh, they're gonna say there'll be more than thirty-six people on the platform up there. So, uh, according to the state of Tennessee, using a square footage calculation. They're saying that instead of having thirty-six people here in the choir. They're saying, "We've gotta count people. We've gotta count enough room for people to be in the closet and in the magistrate area." They're counting four people to be in the closet and the magistrate area, according to the square footage calculation. According to the state of Tennessee's calculation, we can get sixty-two people on that platform. So, according to the state of Tennessee's calculation, instead of us having a two hundred and ninety-three seat auditorium, we have a three hundred and seventeen seat auditorium. The threshold of, for the fire marshal is three hundred. So here's what we're facing. We either are gonna have to install a sprinkler system, or we're gonna have to make a change somewhere. Now, Mr. Hines and four, or excuse me, the architect and four of me, that they were bidding a job, including a job for a, uh, sprinkler system. With our situation with a well, we had to have a tank and all those things. The cost for the sprinkler system would be between two hundred and two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Is what would cost to have this sprinkler system installed. I called Representative Andy Holt Thursday morning, and he called me back Thursday afternoon. And he, I shared, uh, kind of our situation with him. He agreed it was pretty absurd. And, uh, he put me in contact with his assistant Shelby. She called me in a matter of just a few minutes. And she got my name and number and confirmed the story with me. And she turned my name into someone in the insurance and commerce department with the state of Tennessee. They're supposed to be looking into the matter to see if the state has been unreasonable. Uh, the architect said, you know, uh, they're, they're saying that we can, because our, the width of our aisles, we could, they're claiming we could add a row of chairs. And we can do this, that, and the other, and we could go way beyond the two ninety-three. So that's where we are. They're looking, either we're gonna have to, uh, consider putting in a sprinkler system. Or our architect has come up with an idea. That's what you got in your hand tonight. Our architect says, now, now let me make this clear upfront. He, he has, he does not have any assurance the state of Tennessee will even accept this. But this is an idea. Since they use a square footage calculation there. He's suggesting that we take three foot off from here to here. In other words, you're gonna lose three foot back here. And if we lose three foot off of that building, off the building there. We would be under the square footage calculations according to the state of Tennessee. Where we would be under their, uh, their land there, I think according to the new calculations, he said, two ninety-four. So that's his suggestion to us to consider submitting to the state of Tennessee. And he would just say, "Hey, he's already got this done. He, he done this, or you and I can see this. He's got it. He can submit this to the state of Tennessee and say, 'Okay, if they shorten or eliminate some of the square footage of their building, would you accept that?'" So that's what we're here to, uh, to do tonight. We're discuss this. Would you, as a church, consider eliminating three foot from the building? And let the, let the architect resubmit this to see about, uh, approval? Or would you rather install a sprinkler system? And, uh, he basically told me, "If you put a sprinkler system in, they don't care if you got four hundred in the building." Uh, the, the number issue is, is gone once you put the sprinkler system in. So that's kinda where we are here tonight. So, does anybody understand what we, what we're talking about? Now, the print you've got in your hand, the A-one at the bottom left there, or excuse me, the bottom right. That is the, that is the building there with the, the three foot eliminated. On the back side, this other print is what he calls a safety plan. And that's basically the same thing you got on the other side, other than he has to show exits, how people could get out of the building in case of a fire. So there's no difference really, okay? Can you get on screen? So there's, there's really no difference here in the, in the prints. Uh, you just notice here, he's got this, this pulled out. And just scroll on down there. You see these lines where people come in and out of the building and all that. So there's no difference in either print, okay? They're the same print, but he just has to, they'll submit both of those to the state of Tennessee. So, so if you, uh, either way you look there, you're looking at the same, same print.
For Jane?
Yes, sir.
And we have four of these print positions.
Two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand, I was a lot over on the jump. We ain't got it right now, that's for sure, but, uh, it put, it put us on up there a whole lot more what we was planning on, that's for sure. And we've all written, uh, and let me, let me say this while we're on this topic here. Uh, this leads us to the fact that they can't give us a final bid on our building. One of the reasons they can't give us a final bid is because we don't know what we're gonna do. We have to get it all kosher with the state. I mean, they can get pretty close, but our initial rough bid, what's it called, rough bid, was a lot higher than what we first thought. Of course, the last Of course, the last time we had all this done was in two thousand sixteen, cost of materials and everything's gone up drastically. So, uh, we had to take another two hundred fifty, two, two hundred fifty thousand dollars hit on top of what's already been added because the price of material, we're talking of, of dramatic increase of what we've been planning on spending originally, so.
Would it just take the seats off of the, some of the seats?
It takes some of the seats off the back. I think, I remember Ronnie saying you'd lose the roll of seats all the way across the back. See, here's the plan. You know, it's right here. Just keep it right where you got it, Steve. So he's had, he can figure in seats right there, one, two, three, four, five, six, in the corner. Because the state of Tennessee, again, is using, they said you could put that many people in that corner. So you've got to figure all those things. You'll also notice here, there and there and there and there and there and there is handicap seats. Those are just simply, shall I, you leave the chairs out, you put a wheelchair in, a little scooter or whatever. Uh, those things had to be included in there as well. We would lose the roll of chairs across the back there, uh, and you notice here, right here, he's, he's even had to squeeze some, uh, in front of the sound booth there. So every square foot, state of Tennessee's trying to make them save the people to get in that area. So, uh, you'll notice, we, you know, we just got originally the drawing, just shows two people sitting in the sound booth. Uh, again, uh, I forgot, they would knock off a little bit for a piano, they would knock off a little bit for an organ, maybe a drum set on the stage, they'd knock a little bit off that way, but you're not, you know, still two to three people difference to all you're doing, so. But, uh...
So losing that square footage is only going to affect one row of chairs, basically?
It affects one row of chairs, but now, Steve's got me on video, so I might be real honest here. Uh, I don't know if you can't shift some of that load and get some of that back, let's just be honest. We're talking about chairs, we're not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna have pews that are mounted to the concrete. That's one of the views of chairs. You've got some flexibility there. If we were mounting pews on this pad, you'd be fixed, but with chairs, you could probably, uh, you know, move some of this, or you might even reconfigure some, I don't know. Uh, but the thing is, it's gotta, they've gotta get past the Fire Marshal on a square footage test, uh, so that's kind of where we are. I, I, it's hard to believe that they're gonna count people in the closet and the baptistery too.
Does that make your aisles narrow? Or are they still?
No, ma'am, the, the, the aisle width and all this around here on, around the front, and these sides are gonna be the same down the middle, and I forgot, I think, I think we're going, he's tabling five foot wide aisles, so you have plenty, plenty of space. Again, you could, you could, you might, yeah, he showed a five foot right there on, on that aisle width. I think they're all the same, but he showed a five foot off the back. So you give, and that may be, uh, a handicap code, maybe, I'm not sure. Uh, but I, I figure that's probably what it is, is you gotta have a five foot minimum around.
Brother James?
Yes, sir.
Uh, if they just take that three foot off the back, will they still say we can put the same amount on the platform?
Uh, yes, sir, but the, but the seats you're eliminating off the back row will bring us under there. There's still, yes, sir, there, here, here's, I'm glad you brought that up. He's saying that you will go from two fifty-three on the floor, two twenty-eight on the floor, but you're still being put sixty-two people on the stage. See, what's the second item? That's getting those in the closet. We're gonna have a timeout room in our meeting. We know we get at least three people, might stay told in timeout. It'd be legal.
I'll probably be the first.
Hey, all we do is laugh about it. But that's where we are, so.
Brother James?
Yes, sir.
If we want church to size, we're gonna have to just do it, put the sprinklers in. You know, we may get what we're having, maybe coming, I hope we do.
Uh...
Is the city bringing the, the fire hydrant, is the fire hydrant gonna be down here in front of the church?
Now, they didn't say exactly where they're gonna put that. Has, has Ben Woods gonna determine that, or who's gonna?
We, we mentioned this, uh, with us, and, uh, be, be so they can serve both.
Because if they, because if they do that, then you can, if you have to have the sprinklers in, then you've got adequate water there, and that, of course, that's an unme, unmeasured because it's never used unless there is a fire.
So you're saying you think we could tie the sprinkler system into that?
Absolutely. Yeah, and, and not being drilling no big, well, it's, the sprinkler system too gonna be expensive, but it'd be a whole lot better for it to be on, on the city water with better pressure and better regulation, volume and everything. Also, uh, if I plumb stamp all those over there, I put him in lift pump as far as the sewer goes, because he goes from there to a, a manhole up there in front of CSI or whatever they manufacture it, because the sewer don't come up down. So if they want you on the sewer, by law, they have to bring it to your property line and then it's up to you to get it from your building to there. But by law, if they want you to get on the city sewer, they gotta bring it, because you, you are in the city limits, they gotta bring it to your property line.
What do you think, with the price difference and, and sprinkler system hooked to the city supply versus, like he's talking about, we haven't had the tank and the pump because you're gonna have a well.
Forty, fifty thousand dollars?
Forty, fifty thousand dollars. So you're still talking a hundred, a hundred?
You don't need a will.
Need a hundred, a hundred fifty, you're still talking a hundred fifty, two thousand dollars?
Having, having fire, your first thing is, if you catch your power off anyway, you're gonna fix the lens, which is that, so, but you're not gonna have a will.
Yeah, that's a lot of adds, because if you, if you do have a sprinkler system, just like in, in some areas, they're making them put a sprinkler system in houses that are a certain size, you have to have a total separate electrical service for that well and a separate well outside of what you're using in the house. So, yeah, that, that bring on...
So, so you don't even, so we don't even know what we got, even what we can do to negotiate with?
It won't work.
It won't work. Okay. So we're talking...
So if they, but if they bring the city water down, then you're, I mean, you're a step ahead in the game there, because then you can, you, you can tap on it for your sprinkler system.
Okay. So we're not, we're, even if we, you know, we had to talk about having to have additional way over, additional whatever, even if you try to go with...
But if you can drop a row of seats off the back and get this thing done and save two hundred thousand dollars, I mean, that's where you didn't go, because you, like you say, you can always shift your chairs, you, you, you know, if you need this, I don't know how many rows, how many chairs on that back row, but I guarantee you, keep that three feet off there, it's still good in there.
I, I, I think we could. And again, let me, let me say this, if you do, if the church wants to take three foot off, this is just a, this is a trial run, you could say. This is not, this is not a done deal, this is just to see if the state of Tennessee wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't pass it after that, so, uh, so I don't...
If they don't pass it, are we gonna see if we stuck with the sprinkler, right?
It's looking that way. Now, I asked him the other day, "Is this the last hurdle we have?" He said, "This is it." If, if we, to his knowledge, they, they've been back and forth on a lot of different things. He talked to a young lady, he said multiple times, she wasn't giving. He asked for her superior, her superior wasn't giving. And so he said, "To his knowledge, this is our last hurdle with the Fire Marshal." So if this three foot thing doesn't work, then you are gonna, that's my understanding, we're faced with having to do the sprinklers.
If the sprinkler, if we have to ha, end up having to have it, how much more a month do we have a proximal figure that's gonna cost us a month?
Well, if we're tying that here to the, to the water supply, I, I don't think, he said that's not meters, so I don't think there'd be any expense that much.
Well, he's about as far as your mortgage.
Oh, you mean the overall building, now that, I, I don't have to go back and bank on that. Uh, you know, again, if we're gonna spend a hundred fifty thousand dollars more, and here's the thing, we don't have the cost of building yet, so we, we can't get an accurate mortgage, uh, payment yet anyway, so we're still waiting on that. So we've got a lot of things up in there here we haven't gotten finalized, but we, we, the last time we thought, you know, you know, those saying about thinking, um, we thought we were more than five hundred thousand dollars and had plenty to, to do the building with, and that was a forty-five hundred dollar monthly payment, I believe that's right, if you're... So that's what we were looking at, well, the cost of building's gone up, so we may, we thought five hundred thousand was gonna be plenty, but now five hundred thousand may not be, so we don't know. Until we get a final, uh, final number on the, on the, on the bid, uh, we kind of don't know where the mortgage would be for that payment yet, okay? But that's a good question, Ben, we have to find that out, you know, we're gonna be faced with doing that. That'd definitely be something to consider.
Like, make a motion if we try and remove the three feet, see if that pays the state the mortgage.
Okay, so we got a motion then to give this three foot reduction a warrant, or a second?
Second.
All right, second. Any questions? Any other discussion?
Is there something we need to do before we find out what Andy Holt found out for us?
Well, and I, I thought about that too. I was hoping they'd get in touch, back in touch with me, and this was Thursday, I was hoping they'd get in back in touch with me before tonight, so, um, I, I, that's a good question, Jerry, I don't know.
We go, I guess we go ahead and vote on it and have it, have it ready, but hopefully they could get something done and Satan not have to go through the whole...
Not have to do it.
What do churches in the country have to do? I mean, they don't have city water.
Uh, they'd have to do something similar to what we're talking about if they're, uh, above the three hundred seat capacity.
Yeah, put it in a separate way, or be able to...
Like what we're talking about.
You got two, you got two eighty-five for the overhead for a sprinkler system, that's the minimum, I mean, that, some of them are three eighty-five. You don't have to have a bigger will.
Some of it, you know, it's, they're gonna have to meet the code just like we were. It's not just because we're in the city limits, it's, it's the three hundred seat. And then when we sat down with the builder, we all knew that. He told us upfront, said, "You do not want to go over three hundred, you're gonna run into all this." And we intentionally tried to design something to be under the three hundred part for that reason. And, but again, the state uses a square footage calculation, and the architect has got a footprint, so to speak, he's, these are the seats we've got designed, so, uh, unless you come up there and quack your stage off and trim it right up to the, uh, choir or something and eliminate square footage that way, I don't know. Uh, they look kind of, you got a great big building, a little bit of stage, it look kind of fun. So we got a motion made, a second and discussion, so we wanna vote on reducing the building foot, uh, uh, three foot. And I'll just sit on that, okay? If y'all, if y'all approve that, I'll just sit on it until I hear from the insurance and commerce guy. And if he can help us, then glory to God, if he can't, we'll give that other a try. How about that? And we'll see, see, again, this is not a guaranteed approval, okay? Any other discussion?
Brother James, if we do not install a sprinkler system and we have a fire in a lost flat, we're gonna fall out of safety.
That is another, that's another thing to consider. Uh, now, but I have the fire hydrant here, uh, Andy Holt legislated the other day, I thought it was, was pretty good. He said, "You know, if, uh, and, and, and the architect did the same thing, when, when you see this live safety plan on the back of that print, he's got adequate exits, he's got all that, all that there. And if we've got a fire hydrant out here, they could fight, fight a lot more, uh, adequately." But Andy Holt said, "You know, if you have somebody sleeping there, I, I think a, a sprinkler system would be a non-negotiable." But he said, "You know, you're meeting there for an hour or two on Sunday, an hour on me's at night," and so, um, I agree, but now, we're sitting in a situation right now, somebody, something happened, we are, we're in the same boat right now. Uh, we're still, you know, anything can happen. Uh, we're living in a world today where you can get trouble, you know, multiple ways. But that is something to consider.
We have multiple people going to state during service, knowledgeable.
I remember the first Sunday, big springs after they built the building, and Fire Marshal could give them a fit, they had installed a fire alarm back there that went nowhere. And all it done was alarm, set alarm off within the building for you to get out, it didn't go to City Hall, it didn't go anywhere else. And we just got, the service cranked up good, that thing went berserk, nobody knew how to turn it off, and it took, it took a few minutes there to get all that, uh, all that straightened out. But anyway, so... Okay, so the motion second is, if we try the three foot reduction and, uh, and, uh, wait on the insurance commerce. Any other discussion before we go? Everybody clear now? All right, all's in favor of that, we'll raise your right hand. All right, any, any opposed, raise your right hand in the motion period. So we'll, we'll wait and see what the insurance and commerce department has to say, and if they can't do anything for us, we'll give them the okay then to try to, uh, submit the three foot reduction, okay? All right. Anybody have any questions, anything before we dismiss here tonight? Well, thank you for coming and, uh, being interested. I, I think it would be very fitting tonight, if you're able, let's, let's be dismissed here in the altar, let's pray over this and ask for the Lord's blessing upon this situation. And, uh, you know, it's, uh, when you go dealing with things like this, there's a lot of different things to deal with, and so if you would join me here, we'll be dismissed from the altar, if you're able, if you're not, we can sit there, we'll see where you All right, will you pray with me? Father, we come forward here throwing grace tonight, and you've promised us in your word that if we lacked wisdom, we just must simply ask you, you give it to us liberally. Father, we ask you for wisdom as we move forward in this building program, as we meet challenges and hurdles, and, oh, we pray that your will be done in this situation. Father, be your will to open the door for this to be approved, that you would do so. We pray for the individual who will be on, working on our behalf at the insurance and commerce department. Father, we pray to give that individual wisdom as well. But we pray for the resources, Father, to give us the resources that we need, Father, to carry this out, that your will will be done, again, that you will be pleased here at this place. Father, we thank you for the good meeting we've had, and we thank you for those who have worked hard on the committee and went through multiple meetings and ideas. Thank you for the congregation and their support. Lord, again, we ask you not to intervene in this situation, Lord, and we pray that your will be done, and we ask you to guide us and direct us. We ask you not to dismiss us in your care, Father. We love you, and it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen. You're dismissed.